They're excited this afternoon, their last budget session. So I am very excited about that. But in today's budget session, Kevin, do you have the, you know, the follow-up questions?
Yes, the follow-up questions are in the Budget Work Sessions folder on the Google Drive.
Okay.
That everyone has access to.
Okay, so your follow-up questions are available as well as we'll be, so today we'll be looking at council proposals as well as, I believe, administrative proposals. And it should be a great time of discussion. So I was waiting on interns to come in, hello.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. We wanted to do an introduction of them. And then we'll get started. Good, how you doing? All right, good morning, good morning. So y'all, this is Vanessa Jackson and she's over our intern program. Y'all know our intern is Trinity, right here, Williams. So Vanessa, I turn it over to you to introduce our wonderful interns for this summer and the great work that you do.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much for having me. I am Vanessa Jackson and I'm a Community Program Manager here at the City in the Nat, Department of Equity and Community Engagement. It brings me great pleasure as our budget will allow us to do so, which is nearly almost every semester for us to bring on a group of intern cohorts. And for the summer section, we have a fabulous group of students. This opportunity gives them a chance to learn more about their careers, juxtaposition to their majors and field of interest, to learn more about city government as a whole and the different career options that exist within city government. Also, we get a valuable learning experience as being professionals and working with these young minds because they always bring something to the fore that perhaps we didn't know about, we didn't think about. And so at this time, I like for them, because they are so, they are so smart and intelligent. I want them to introduce themselves to you all by giving their name, the schools they attend, their, the classification as well as the departments that they're assigned. And I'll start with Trey.
I'm Trey Gere. I'm a U T C.
The Mox.
Yeah. The Mox. And I'm a junior and I'm majoring in Political Science. I'm working with Ellis and Intergovernmental Fair.
Hi, my name is Jenna Michelle. I'm a sophomore at Howard University and I have a Political Science major, Communications minor, and I work with Eric in Communications.
Good morning, my name is Kason Cavno. I actually recently graduated. I have a degree in Economics from U T C.
Hi, my name is Maya.
Oh, Grants and Opportunities.
Hi, my name is Maya Houston. I'm currently a sophomore at Quincy University. I am a Political Science major and I'm currently working with Carmen Davis in Parks and Outdoors.
My name is Abby Sharon. I am a senior at U T C and I'm majoring in Mechatronics Engineering and I work with Jeffrey Mills in Economic Development.
My name is Brianna. I'm a sophomore at U T C and my major is Criminal Justice and I work with Ms. Vanessa with Equity and Community Engagement.
Can we have one more?
Who are you?
Good morning, everyone. I am Tweedy Williams. I am a sophomore, History major, Philosophy minor on the pre-law track at Howard University. I currently work under Councilman Dolly but I serve all of city council.
One last thing, I am also so proud about this and that is the fact that these young people also impact our workforce here in the, within the city of Chattanooga with these opportunities, internships. We've had a number of interns with the city of Chattanooga that have gone on to be employed by the city of Chattanooga. And I think that is an awesome thing. Either they are, you know, just grabbed right off the bat if they are recent graduates and sometimes they circle back to us. But I feel like that's all attributed to the experience here at the city. And I want to thank those of you who are hosting interns, if there are any of you in here today that are hosting interns in your department, please thanks. And I also want to thank all in love by with the budget allocation process and making sure that we continue to have this program. Thank you so much for giving me this time.
Thank you, Vanessa. Thank you for having me. Thank you so much and thanks for your service. And I do want to note that I emailed Trey, he didn't email me back, but we got Trey. Okay, you too. All right, y'all, so we will get started with our budget session. And so we have, again, council proposals and then we will break for lunch. Well, it depends on how we go, we can let this flow today. Council proposals, break for lunch, and then we have administration proposals. So with that, we'll start with council. Oh, Kevin, did you have anything to start with?
No, just looking forward to the conversation and continuing today, so thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, council, I know Councilman Henderson gave us information last week. Did you have any follow-up or additional information you wanted to share, Councilman Henderson?
No, no.
Okay. All right. And any other council members have suggestions, recommendations, proposals for this upcoming budget?
I've got some thoughts and a few proposals.
Okay, Councilman Davis. Go ahead.
All right. So I remember during our work session prior to passing the budget back in June, there were several of us that had expressed that when the time came for this process that we would, when we're looking at how to fund pay increases for police officers and firefighters, that we would ask the administration work with us to find additional savings in this budget rather than going right to a property tax increase, right? And I remember at the end of that June 3rd council business meeting, which was our first reading on the budget, that the administration had told us that we're absolutely committed to rolling up our sleeves and trying to find a 50-50 split. So meaning that we'd like to find 50% of the money needed in the current budget, 50% possibly from a tax increase. So then we fast forward to July 15th at our first work session for this budget amendment and the administration says we don't support any additional cuts to the budget. So I think somewhere in there, I missed the part where we rolled up our sleeves. And that's unfortunate, I think. So I know that I had personally mentioned that when we get to this point that we should start with looking at those additional savings before we consider a tax increase. But again, on that July 15th meeting, what we started with was looking at a presentation on capturing growth, which far as I can tell is kind of a fancy term for a tax increase, right? And again, that's unfortunate. And so I wanted to kind of think for a minute about who's capturing growth here in the city. Or more accurately, who's not capturing growth, right? So it's certainly not the roughly half of our citizens who are rental. They have no home equity that's growing. All they stand to gain is increased, increased rent, which will make their housing, which is probably already unaffordable, even less affordable. I also don't think it's the roughly other half of residents who, although they own their homes and hopefully have some equity there that has increased in recent years, that's not a liquid asset that they can use to pay an increased tax burden, right? That, that increased tax burden is going to fall on their household budget, which is probably already still strained by inflation and other economic factors. So I think, you know, in asserting that the administration will not support any additional budget cuts, what I hear is that everything in a budget is a priority, which means that nothing is a priority. And so I think based on that, we need some guardrails in place to ensure that we have competitive pay for our police and sworn firefighters. And that's a true priority in each budget here, right? Because we were just here four years ago looking at a tax increase to increase pay for our first responders. So my first proposal would be that each year we do market salary studies for our police and firefighters, looking at cities that are comparable in size to Chattanooga and what they pay their, their first responders. And if we find in any such annual study that our pay falls below the average, that whatever else the budget might include for that, that coming year, it will, it must include an appropriation that will increase pay to bring that pay up or above the average. So that's my first proposal. It's kind of a big, a big picture thing, but I think it's important that we start there. And to the issue at hand, I think we all agree, we have to pay our first responders better. And, and I believe we're all committed to doing that. And there are several of us who are still committed to rolling up our sleeves and looking at cuts. I know Councilman Henderson had a proposal last week. For my part, I think we ought to look at animal control services, possibly bringing those in-house. I think that could result in substantial savings compared to what we're paying McCamey currently. And I hope that there's, there's others that have similar proposals that we can look at so that we can, can really give a good faith effort at, at finding additional savings before we look at our, our tax rate. But when we do get there and we're looking at where to set our property tax rate, I do think we should set it at a level that provides the balance of what's needed to pay, to properly and adequately pay our sworn police officers and firefighters. And nothing more and nothing less than that. And that's what I have, thank you.
That was fantastic. Thank you, Councilman Davis. All right, any other, yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Davis, I really appreciate that and reminding us all that, yeah, we, we had had some useful conversations about rolling up our sleeves. I appreciated also what Councilman Henderson brought last week and so I dug in a little bit more. I've been thinking about the, the values of District 2. And as y'all know, District 2 has really diverse thought. We split almost 50-50 on just about everything in District 2 when it comes to our opinions, which I think is pretty terrific and helps me have to be somebody that's always looking for a middle solution, a practical solution. And I will say that one of the things that, two things that I thought about with regard to the values of District 2 in this conversation is, number one, that District 2 considers public safety and public infrastructure maintenance as the two primary functions of city government. And I would add to that point that District 2, like my experience with all of you as colleagues, District 2 has high expectations of those services. You know, when they, when they call a police officer, they want to have a positive interaction. When they call a fire department, they expect quick service. They want our firefighters to be well-trained and et cetera. And they want our roads to be well-tended. They want more sidewalks. So they have a high value for it and, and they prioritize it. The other thing is that what I have heard repeatedly from District 2 is that they want our police officers and firefighters to be well-trained and paid a competitive wage. And then they said, but we need you to find the money in the budget. I heard that over and over. We want this, there's got to be something that we're doing that is not as valuable or not as efficient as it could be. And we want you, as a city council, to find that. So, you know, you all have seen the, the fiscal realities that District 2 has seen property values increase 56%. District 9 and District 5 are also in the top three. It's going to have a major impact, especially on the neighborhoods in District 2 that have been historically affordable. So Dale Acres, Lupton City, Bagwell City, Forest Plaza. Those are the ones that are going to be impacted the most deeply by these changes because to Councilman Davis's point, this is not a liquid wealth. This is wealth in a home that the individuals in most part are not intending to sell and feel a pressure that there are not other options on the market that, if they say they want to downsize, the home will be as expensive or more expensive than the home that they live in now. It is, it's just an interesting point in our, in our economic reality. Inflation has impacted everyone. Renters, great point, Councilman. Also, our small business renters will be deeply impacted by this when we consider that commercial property taxes will also go up. And the small businesses are, for me, the heart of Chattanooga. The 80% of our residents in any given time, it's a good 80-20 split, work for a small business. And small businesses send kids to college, they send kids to preschool, they have to pay healthcare, and they don't have the deeper pockets that our larger corporate citizens do. So nobody's dollar is going as far as it did even a year ago. Economists expect inflation to increase. I mean, Mayor Kelly and I were talking yesterday, he's, he knows a lot about economics. He was like, yeah, it's not, it's not going anywhere but up. We, we will continue to see this. I have done some research and found that major employers are giving cost of living raises of about 2% to 4% annually. But again, only about 20% of the Chattanooga workforce is employed by a major employer. And I'm not hearing from people who work anecdotally in small businesses that they have received raises, certainly not in keeping with inflation. So I also have to remember as the representative of District 2 that my district does carry the highest tax burden in the city. A homeowner average right now with our 1.55 milage rate would be 400, or $4,327 in city and county tax annually. It's a significant amount of money. And, and so for me, as I recognize that that equity is locked into a home, I carry this responsibility very heavily. So I've been looking at the budget overall and Councilman Henderson had made an interesting point about having all departments other than Fire and Police cut 1% off their budget. Well, what I found as I was looking at the, the way the milage rate would impact, District 2 in particular, but average tax increases across the city, I, I felt like 1% wouldn't really get us where we needed to go. But also I thought about what are the priorities that I see and that District 2 sees in local government? And so talking with Weston, he pointed out that of the 345, 345 million of our general operating budget, that 48 or 49 million of it is what he would call untouchable. So it's debt service, it's appropriations that have already been made. And so kind of taking that out of the picture. But then also Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works and Parks and Outdoors, to me, are like the big four of the, of the primary roles of city government. Which left me with a remaining $77.4 million in general funds. So that's where I thought, okay, where can we start seeing some savings? And so what I'm recommending for us to consider is, community development has a budget of $11.1 million. And I've got some reduction rationale in this right-hand column. Community development is one that, as a council, over the last five years, we've had many conversations that it is not performing to our expectations. And so I'm suggesting a 15% reduction in that budget, which would pull out 1.665 million. I'm not suggesting how those budget dollars be real, or how that budget be refigured, but I do believe it leaves a healthy budget of $9.4 million to think about community development and how we can move toward Mayor Kelly's goal of having those be community hubs. Next, two executive areas where I think we need to set a tone. So a 10% reduction of the council office budget, which would be a savings of $99,666, and a 10% reduction from the mayor's office, which would be a reduction of $771,898. I believe that the 10% reductions from our leaders are a commitment to our first responders, responders, excuse me. Kind of nervous, y'all. And intentional use of government funds. That is a typo, excuse me, that I didn't spell intentional correctly there. And then finally, for all other departments not listed above, a 5% across-the-board cut. That's not final, excuse me, that is one other item. That, I believe that 5% cut should be absorbable by the remaining departments. And I think that it gives the city the opportunity to evaluate mission creep and focus on what it can do well and efficiently. I agree with Councilman Davis that when everything is a priority, nothing is a priority. So I think this could really give us some, a challenge to really take a hard look at what, what we intend to do very, very what we intend to do very, very well at the city and do it very well and not do things that we know are not really the primary job of the city. And then finally, and this one is, I'm a little unsure about the actual costing of this, but job training. This reduction, I'm suggesting a half a million dollars in our spending on job training, and I want to be as clear about this as possible. It is not intended to eliminate apprenticeships within the city or internships within the city, and the internships, I think, have a funding line actually from a federal program, but not intended to eliminate apprenticeships within the city or the Builders Blueprint programs. The potential savings remain to be determined because even as I've talked with staff, it's a little unclear right now. They're not able to quickly pull what departments are doing individual job training programs and what staff are associated with those. I don't, what I have witnessed is I have, I think job training is fantastic, I think it's important, but what I've witnessed is that when we do job training programs, they tend to be relatively small, and they tend to be relatively small in terms of the number of people that are served. They tend to have staff associated with them, and I'm not seeing the long-term success that I see with some of the outside programs that happen in our city that are focused 100% on job training. So we don't train many people in the city each year, and when we do, it costs more, not just in hard training costs, but in salaries and benefits. And people are not as successful long-term as they are with programs outside of the city. Established, highly-successful workforce education programs include Chattanooga State, Launch, and the Construction Career Center. Participants in outside programs like these have a more formalized learning environment and long-term relationships in the job training space. So I think this is an example of one where economic development, I see, is an important role for the city, but I don't think that in having economic development, that means that we do every part of it and that we do all of the nuts and bolts. So altogether, that would create a total new savings of $5.9 million. And with the set aside, that would bring us, the $5 million set aside that we've already done, that would bring us to $10.9 million reserved for first responder pay. Now, I have yet to receive an actual number of what the first responder pay request is going to be. I've heard $18 million to $23 million, so there's a lot of movement there. So I don't know what 18 would get us, and I don't know what 23 would get us, but hopefully by the end of the day today, we will have heard from the administration on that. But it would leave us, with that set aside of that $10.9 million, it would leave us a funding gap of between $7 million and $12 million in funding. And so I just put together a budget amendment worksheet. I hope to goodness that this math stands up with Weston's, boy, I really, really, and with what Hanukkah put together. But what I was seeing was that with the current milage rate, you know, the worksheet that we had seen went from 10 cents to 10 cents to 10 cents, so I tried to break it down to see, for my purposes, you know, what would it cost the average District Two resident each month based on the cents, and how much would we produce? And I did stop at 12 cents because I saw that the funding gap with this plan would be $12.08 million. So if we did, what, as I do the math, if we went to a 12-cent increase, that would get us to the $12.9 that we would need at the 23 million, if that's the magic number. But anyway, so that's where I was thinking as I took on the challenge that was posed by our Budget Chairwoman of, okay, we have a session that is, what are the council ideas? And y'all, it was hard. I've been thinking about it for a long time, and I do think that if we made these cuts, I think we could come out stronger for it. I really do. So that's my suggestion.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Any additional recommendations from council members? Oh, yeah, Councilman Henderson.
Follow, thank you for, this is very thorough, very complete information. I guess I want to point out, and which I think is very doable, the 12 cents is like 8%. It would be an 8% tax increase, which the emails that I have received since putting out my proposal, I think most residents support what they would consider a modest tax increase. Now, everybody probably has a different definition as to what modest is, but I think that 8% certainly falls in that, in my opinion, in that modest range. So thank you for that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or any other ideas or recommendations for the budget? All right. Well, thank you so much, council, for that. Looks like we're going to skim through the day here. And so with that, I would give administration, give Kevin, an opportunity to respond, and then I guess, you can know how it goes. I mean, it's just not 30, if you want to move forward with the presentation, that's fine.
I'd like to wait and continue if that's all right.
Okay, okay, all right.
Particularly, I want to sit with this for a little bit. No, no, no. First of all, thank you for spending the time to put this together. And Councilman Davis, thank you for your thoughts on the topic and the recommendations that you made. Councilman Henderson, thank you for what you've offered as well. You know, I think that as we have had this conversation, I'm reminded of where we started with the initial budget, where the administration knows that we left a lot of things on the table that we feel like we need to be doing, ought to be doing, but cannot just because of the constraints on resources. And so I think that, you know, at some point, to me, it feels a little bit like we have this historic opportunity because of what has happened with reappraisals. Reappraisals do not happen in a silo. They're indicators of macroeconomic conditions, and now I totally understand that, what the points that you guys have made about home equity and, you know, how it is not a liquid asset, but at the same time, it is an indicator. And to me, it feels like we are, at times, negotiating against ourselves when I don't think that we have to be doing that, meaning, sure, we could come through and take a fresh look at these proposed cuts, but let's take Community Development as an example. A $1.6 million cut to that budget, I don't see how we could accomplish that without eliminating positions, which is a reduction in service, which the administration doesn't want to do that, and we don't feel like that we need to do that. And so it is difficult to find kind of a common ground between what increasingly feels like a philosophical divide of what is it that government should be doing, especially when we get into conversations around people's jobs and the services that they carry out for us and how that connects to Mayor Kelly's vision for what it is that he is trying to accomplish through his administration. But we'll take, certainly we'll take a fresh look. I do have one question about the job training. So is the half million dollars, did you find that in the budget, or is that an assumption that it exists?
That is an assumption. That's why I noted that the potential savings remains to be determined because you all gave me a lot of information, but that was a piece that was still a question mark from the administration, which, I mean, kind of is part of the indicative, I think, of the fact that we have a little bit of a scattershot approach to job training programs. The impression that I've gotten over the last four and a half years is that, I mean, maybe we find a grant program that we implement, and then we have staff that are attached to that. So some of it's grant dollars, some of it's internal, then we have to hire somebody to do the facilitation. And it's the type of thing that if we didn't go for that grant, Launch might go for that grant or the Construction Career, I mean, our Builders Blueprint, which I think is a really cool program, and I think it makes sense for the city to be involved in some elements of this. And when we need a, sometimes when you need a backbone organization, it makes sense for the city to be part of the MOU, but it doesn't make sense for us, well, I mean, I would argue, there are probably a lot of times where we've been the MOU or we've had an MOU as a backbone when maybe it should have been Chattanooga State, for example, instead of us. But anyway, so no, that is not a hard and fast number. And, you know, coming up with, you know, when the administration is not offering the halfway point that we, as a council, have asked for, you open it up for us to do that.
Sure.
And so I have based this on four and a half years of leadership within this organization and recognizing that we have, we absolutely are not, we, government has never been and never will be a highly efficient organization, and that's okay. It's not a business. We, you know, sometimes, especially on the campaign trail, people talk about running government like a business, running a school system like a business. It's not a business. There are absolutely business practices that we need to bring to it, however, and being thoughtful about the work that we take on and the work that we continue to hold. I mean, government can serve sometimes as a catalytic partner in something, but that doesn't mean we hold it forever. You know, if we start this Builders Blueprint and it works great, and we do it for three years, then we hand it over to the Construction Career Center, and we let them run it, and it's not, it's not a City of Chattanooga program anymore, you know?
Sure.
So that number, that's how, I just, I just kind of made some educated guess as to, you know, what we may be resourcing, not just with program dollars, but also with rentals of space potentially or payment of fees for different things and then salary and benefits.
Okay.
And, I mean, and I acknowledge that dollars are not just dollars, right? But if we're talking about, if we're talking about service excellence, we have to be willing to really look hard at what it takes to be excellent.
Sure.
And if we're trying to be all things all the time, we're just not going to be great at it, so.
Registered. And, yeah, to the extent that, well, one, let me just say that we agree with you with the subject of job training. And Sharita and Andrew are working very hard to do kind of an across-the-board analysis of where all of the workforce development activities are happening, both within and outside of the cities. And I think to the extent that Builders Blueprint is an example here, we agree with you there and are actively working to transition that program over to Chad State where we feel like it is better served, which is why there was a reduction, or one of the reasons why there was a reduction to that line item where we did one cohort with pretty good success, but feel like it would be better carried out in the long term over there as opposed in-house.
There's a lot to be said to be part of a learning environment.
That's right. So I think, Madam Chair, that that's all I have. I'm tempted to call an audible and ask Weston to join us at the table to take a look at the number because I think that there, Chairwoman Hill pointed out that there seems to be some lack of clarity around the dollar figure that we're going after. So if that's okay with you, could I invite Weston to the table just to throw up real quick a spreadsheet that shows the ask for Fire and Police and the justification for it?
Yes, that's fine. But before we do that, Councilman Clark?
Yeah. Hey, good morning, everybody. My apologies for being late. I'm actually a part of the working class that has to get up and go to work, and I'm actually leaving in about 20 minutes to go upstairs to listen to the rest of this call. So I'm glad to be joined by some other working-class people here that probably should be at work, but they're here doing this, and I appreciate them for being here. I want to start off some comments to your proposal. One, you know, I think you mentioned that the council had requested that the administration meet us halfway. I don't think that was a council request. I think, and when you speak for council, you know, speak for yourself, you know, speak for the individuals that you believe in, and I respect your belief, and I respect the, you represent District Two. But the council did not ask for a halfway point to the administration. In my district, you know, let me be clear that we have underfunded infrastructure things. And like your district, we too saw an increase in property value mostly due to redistricting of an area in our community that has high property value. The houses are just worth more than like many in your district. And so we have to be careful that when we start throwing out percentages and numbers, we have to kind of look at the narrative and really think about what that means. I don't look at this as a property tax increase, and I have been in my district, I've been to the, met with preachers about this, my mama, we all pay taxes, and most of our taxes are escrowed because some of our houses are not paid off. So when we ask for this money, let's just be clear, it's not coming out of pocket immediately until your mortgage company or whoever does the adjustment. And, you know, when we talk about budget amendments, you know, I look at the Community Development. I, just psychologically, when I think of taking $1.6 million out of Community Development, I'm like, how are we developing the community by taking money away? Now, do I agree that that department has underperformed? Absolutely. I chaired that committee, and I think we're having robust conversations on how to improve all departments. But I don't think that necessarily sometimes means cutting. I think that sometimes means cutting personnel that needs to be realigned. I'm also a fiscal conservative. I've made, my district is a fiscal conservative. I can say that boldly and then not come to the podium and beat me up because we, as a working-class people, we know what it's like to live with nothing or to try to make means meet. That's what conservatism to us is not party-related. It's just that in my household, we've always had to cut numbers and make a way or find a way.
Amen.
And, you know, my, both of my fathers are military, and they were first responders like Toby and all the chief people. And our budgets are moral documents. And when I think about morally what we are tasked to do, we do the right things. As in my district, we're Christians, not all, but the majority. And the moral thing to do is to pay people what they deserve to get paid, especially the people who are charged with the responsibility to keeping us safe. You know, I think about us boasting and bragging about how outdoor and how much tourism we bring here. How about we put a billboard that says, if we don't, Chattanooga doesn't pay their Fire and Police. Are you safe when you come visit Rock City? My budget proposal from District Five would be to hold the rate, and that is not a tax increase. We, the city council did not raise taxes. The state required us to adopt a certified rate of 1.5 to have this conversation. Oh, my God, they're asking us to do our jobs, policy people. And I'm going to ask that we hold the rate, and my people in District Five are happy. And our houses are not worth as much as some of y'all's in these districts where the houses are millions of dollars, but we are happy to contribute and sacrifice. I go to a church, we're trying to build a building. I pay my tithes and my offerings, but you know what our pastor asks us to do? Sacrificial giving, because that's what we should do. And here we are at an opportunity where inflation, because this city hasn't come up with a plan, council, I wasn't here four years ago. Other cities came up with a cost of living adjustment. We didn't. Why? Who was, who, what genius didn't come up with that idea? Because we'll be here again in four years. Let's, I'm not an economist, but I'm also not a dummy. Like, everything has gone up on you, 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 and you. And guess what? You, 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 and them. But I, my pay didn't decrease, yours didn't. And so if they're having to pay for the cost of inflation in eggs, cars, utilities, just imagine what it costs to run our government. Prices have gone up, but we have asked these people to live in a city where we don't pay them to live here, but we ask them to protect us. Morally, I cannot stand for that. And my, and when I had this conversation in my district, they're like, oh, I can afford $40 a month. Councilwoman, uh... Councilwoman, uh, Hill, your district is thirty-two dollars.
My district, my average monthly tax increase for a homeowner in District Two, if we raise the mileage rate, if we hold the mileage rate at two dollars and twenty-five cents, will be eighty-seven dollars a month for a homeowner. And that's, when you say money goes into your escrow, it goes on to your.
Yeah, I know, I know. My family does it. And so I think, but based off how much your house is, and based off what your income levels are. I, in my district and in my house, I would pay like thirty-seven dollars a month if I kept, held the rate at 2.5. I can actually afford double that. Now, the seniors of my district, and thank you Deputy, Chief Deputy Ledford, who sent out how many of our people are in the senior tax freeze? Because I want to protect the low-income, the working class, the poor. I want to protect all those people. But some of us have to stop being cheap. Chattanooga is cheap. I'm not going to be cheap. I would love to pay more than thirty-seven dollars. Gladly. My parents would too. My district would too. Come to our town halls. Are y'all having town halls? I am. And we're talking about this, and we're like, my, even though the property value, not the property tax, the property value in my district went up fifty-six percent. We're coming out of my pocket thirty, thirty-seven dollars a month to pay these people to protect us. Some of y'all districts don't even have adequate fire departments. And we were told that in these presentations. And I just don't get it. And so, you know, I'm not doing any, I, I, Kevin, I do think there's some things that we need to cut in this budget. And I do have concerns about the builders program. I do have concerns about underperforming departments and how we can cut the fat to make sure it's ran more efficiently. I get that. I actually want to hold the rate and cut. That's the type of conservatism I believe in. And some of y'all are conservative and should go further. But we have to pay our bills. And we have to do the right thing, guys. And so, you know, my budget proposal is to hold some of the amendments you have mentioned. But I just don't want us to be cheap. And we live in a city where others are outpacing us, Knoxville, Murfreesboro. They don't have a real front. They have a little square. But they're developing and growing faster than us. And we're so focused on outdoors, which is great. I love all that stuff. But let us be focused on our people. Our people, that's who we serve. That's who vote, not the buildings, not the water, not the stadiums, not the bridges, which I all love. I love all those things. But if we don't take care of our people, they have warned us that in five years, we're going to fall off a cliff when all these people that are older are retiring. And I work in public health, and let me tell you something. When you don't do the preventative care now, it's a little cheap. But when you let it progress, keep on letting the fire department not have trucks in your neighborhood. When the, hit the fan, it will cost us more. And you all will look back on this day and wish that you adjusted to the inflation. This city has not adjusted inflation in four years. Prices have gone up on everything in four years, and we haven't done it. Everybody else has. So why would y'all not capture the money to pay for things that, y'all think it's just fire and police? We got public works people that are underpaid. We haven't even talked about that. And so I want to capture as much growth as the law allows us to, to do the business of running the city. Yeah, our districts have different needs, but we're one Chattanooga. That's what the plan says. I don't agree with everything in the plan, but I also think it's not a bad plan. And I'm thinking, I'm just thinking to myself, do not be cheap. And I'm sorry if that's an insult to any of you. But in my household and in my district, we will hold the rate at 2.25 on what your property is worth. That is, the world we live in, property value goes up. It's not, your house is not going to be the same it was four years ago, the nineties or the eighties. Duh. And so allow, the government allows us to adjust, to drop the rate to the certified rate so that we could have this conversation if we want to ask the citizens to collect more money from them so that we can do more for them. Councilman Harvey, we would like to put more, I would love to put more fire trucks in your district. Y'all are lacking. That concerns me if I lived in District Four and not to put pressure on you. My district's got a lot of needs. Food access. I would love to capture an extra forty million dollars to help lure them people back in like y'all lured the airlines and the other people. It's more work to do other than just fire and police. And so, the other thing I want to say before I retreat upstairs to my office for a meeting is they asked for a raise, okay? And that's fine. I know y'all have come up with these numbers of twenty-three million and twenty, what, eighteen and three, twenty-three million? And that's fine and dandy, but that does not even make us competitive. That's still being cheap. Does not make us competitive. The sheriff's office, does anybody know what they're doing this week? Raketa? They're raising, they're paying their, their officers to keep the county safe. Sixty thousand dollars is what sheriff, what I'm hearing, not officially, that he will start paying their officers sixty K. And we think we're doing something by in, in, increasing them to a raise, but not competitive. How do you think, how do we retain the best and the brightest without paying them? You guys received an email from the police chief of somebody who left the city, went to the county because we don't pay them. So what happens when everybody start leaving? Who go, where y'all gonna find officers to protect you when they start breaking in your cars? My district has crime issues. My people are not for this. You can cut community development, police, fire, not pay these people, but it hurts my district when y'all do that. I can't, and I, last week I used the word, we should be embarrassed. This week, you should be ashamed. And I don't care who get mad at me. I love all of y'all. But the fact that y'all are being cheap, I'm going to say that word again, because we have not, we are twenty-two percent behind on the inflation rate. Meaning, we ain't done nothing in this city to raise the cost, but everybody else is expecting to pay it. Do y'all know the data that our fire and police and teachers in this county are some of the highest customers for payday lending? Do y'all know that in this city? So this is just not like, yes, government needs to run better and more efficient. But we need to do the, our budget is a moral document and tells us what type of people we are. And Chattanooga boasts about being all this wealth and growth. You're cheap. You're cheap. Not District Five. We are smart, we are responsible, and we are faith-based. Meaning, some of these people live in my district. And when we're not paying them not just a raise, but competitive so they can live, we gonna pay it in District Five. And I guarantee you, nobody from my district's going to come and complain. Because they understand that when we do the 2.5, we get eighty million dollars to do more for government. And there is more to be done other than raising policing and fire. 2.25 on the current property values. We gladly pay it. I wish we, I wish I could pay more. And then the seniors and the, the people who are disabilities and, I'm going to make sure they get in the tax freeze programs. Matter of fact, my di- district has the highest participation. And you know why? Because we, we hitting the ground getting people enrolled. We're doing our, our due diligence. We're doing our job as policymakers. Just, if we really want to make government work, we got to pay for it. You pay for what you get. Just like, you know, your car mess up, go to a cheap shade treating mechanic and see what happened. You're going to be back and have to pay more. You have to pay somebody more to fix what he couldn't do. So keep being cheap. We're not going to be cheap. I'm not supporting this amendment at this rate. I'm sorry. I think when I look at the average, medium income in your area, I, I, which is not in my area, at my salary, I, without city council salary, I can afford eighty dollars a month. So can you all, you all, and you all can. Now, I'm not putting my nose in y'all business. But remember, you pay for what you get. So when District Two is paying eighty dollars, you're just not paying it to go down the drain. You're paying it for safety, protection. You have a community center that's rotted, that needs to be developed? That's what I'm saying. I'm looking at the table, and I can see everybody, you got a water issue? Marvin, I don't even know what's going on in your district. I ain't going to mess with you today.
Please don't.
But what I'm saying is, is that while we are in this historic time to capture inflation as we should, that everybody else in America has, let's do it, and let's do some big things. And let our districts be proud that we didn't just raise, we're not just raising property taxes. We're saying, you know what, guys? We're so sorry. We didn't catch up on inflation. We're sorry we didn't fix the sewer settlement issues that's happening in all of your streets, because we're so cheap. And so now, we can capture this growth as the government is allowing us to do, that all of our neighbors are doing. Go talk to your mayors and city council colleagues in other cities. They're laughing at us. I was like, what? You have the opportunity to keep the rate lower or to hold it, and you're not using it to better your government? I think it's weird. But this would not fly in my district. And please do not take it as personal. I think it is a moral thing to do. And I really do believe, Councilwoman Hill, that government is a business. We are in the business of taking care of our customers. I'm a customer, you're a customer. I pay every day. We send a lot of money to Georgia, because I don't have a grocery store. So when my people got to go to Ringo, Georgia, that sales tax dollar stayed in, in East Ridge and Jo-, uh, and then sometimes in Georgia. So when I, y'all hear me complaining about a grocery store at seven, eight, we're having to go to another city to get groceries. Guess what that sales tax dollar saying? Since y'all are smart economists. Kevin, where's the money going? It's not coming to Chattanooga. So a lot of this stuff is basic economics. And I, I highly recommend you all get educated. Or as they say in Memphis, get learned on how we make things happen and become an economist. Some of y'all afraid to do this because y'all like, oh, they're going to kick me out of because I raised taxes. Well, how about they kick you out of office because your disregard is dilapidated? I'm, I'm not getting kicked out of office because we didn't improve the district. Money don't grow on trees. But it does grow when we do the right thing.
Yes.
And collect property value taxes. And that is not on city council, the assessor. I blame Marty Haines for this. Marty raised property values. We did not raise taxes. And I'm not taking that narrative into my district. We did not raise taxes. We raised property value. And the state says, go get the money. And we're, we're going to leave it on the table. Well, we got stuff to do. That's crazy. And that's, the young folks say that's crazy work, and that's what is happening here. I support cuts. I know you like, you have concerns. We share some of the same concerns. I want to hold the rate and do some cuts. That's true conservatism. And that's what my people have asked me to do. And that's what we're going to do. So, I don't have any, uh, uh, budget proposals, amendments yet. I want to hear what the administration has to say first. And then, if you, if it's to our liking, I want to hear your presentation and see if it's something that we have already thought of. And so, we'll go with it, because it's y'all's budget. Y'all are responsible for the budget, not us. Give us some, something to chew on, and I'll be like, okay, that tastes good or not. And if it don't taste good, I'll tell you how to go back and remake the cake. That's how government works. I went to CSA as an MTSU. They, we are a civic-minded school that taught us well. That's why I like what she does sometimes, when she comes in here and analyzes this. That's how we were trained. Because government has to work, because it is a business. Because we put money into this business to run. And we have to be responsible with other people's money. That is the, that is the, that is one of the great commissions of Christ to ask us to be good stewards of people's money and to pay poor people.
Yes.
Working-class people. And I'm, that's what I'm saying. I'm not for the, po- fire and police. You know, these people are, are not blue, you know, they're blue collar, and some of us get paid more than them. But at least give these people what they, what they're worth. And more, I wish I could pay them eighty thousand. Because y'all cheap. We can't do it. So let's pay what they deserve. And that is a competitive pay, because we will lose some to the, we are losing them. Highway Patrol, the county. And I'm going to be upset when I don't, when I call somebody from breaking into my house in my car, and it takes them five minutes to get to my house because they're on overtime. Those are the realities we're faced with. Let's do something. Let's be bold and do something, capture money and make, and help. He, he had this plan four years ago. Some of it hasn't come to fruition because there was no money for it. So fund it. And let's be proud and brag about what we did, which was bold and not be scared, and capture the growth and increase property values and hold the rate at 2.25. That's it. Sorry about that long monologue. I know Ronald usually does that. He's not here, so I took his time. And I'm going to be upstairs watching the rest of this. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Real quick, uh, we do have a couple of, we have Councilman O'Neal, followed by Councilman Henderson. But if you don't mind, before you go, I do want to give, Kevin, did you have a response to him before we left?
No, no response at this time.
All right. Thank you so much. Council, thank you, Councilman Clark.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilman O'Neal, followed by Councilman Henderson, and then I guess we'll circle back.
Okay. I just want to say, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say.
And I have five minutes before I have to depart.
I just want to say thank you for what you just said. You hit the nail on the head. It is so, so, so important, as I said last week, that we give what is needed. And when they're good, we're better. We, and we have to maintain that. My issue has always been that you put it on the backburner, I say it all the time, and you let it stay there, and you let it stay there, and sometime it just burns completely up. If these raises had been put in line years ago for them to get X number of dollars from every year, then we wouldn't be at this crossroad right here. And thank you so much for, for, I mean, seriously, I, I don't know if anything anybody can say. You say you didn't give a budget, but you just gave one. You just gave one. You really did. And it was absolutely fantastic. And I appreciate you for that. And I want to say thank you to Councilman Clark. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Council.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, followed by Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and let, all the comments and, and I want to make sure, particularly that I foster an, an atmosphere that encourages debate at this table.
Oh, absolutely.
That's where this needs to happen. This, this debate needs to happen at this table. Not on social media, not attacking each other, but, but we need to create and foster that atmosphere for debate around this table. Let me, let me address one thing, and it is ironic that you brought up Sheriff Garrett giving them the pay raise. I heard him, uh, uh, Friday, I was at a meeting, where he said, we were given those raises without asking for a tax increase. He was very proud of the fact that they were given those raises without asking for a tax increase. And, and he, he made some other comments, and I don't want to go into all of those at, at this point in time. But I just want to point out, it can be done.
It can be done.
To, to the administration's point, I say point. When we entered this budget season in, in May, June, or whatever, and the administration at this table said, they did say, regardless of whether one or two council people asked for it, or, you know, regardless of the, of the vehicle, how it got there, the administration did make the comment that they were committed to finding half. And somehow, we've gone from committed to finding half to now, all of a sudden, we can't find any. And so, I have a little bit of issue with that. The second thing I have an issue with, this fire and police pay, if it's a four-alarm fire this year, it was at least a two-alarm fire last year. There's several of us sitting around this table that never heard a peep about it being a two-alarm fire last year.
Yep.
We can only address what we're brought.
That's, that's interesting.
I, I committed, I committed four years ago to a tax increase that generated thirty million dollars, that every dollar went into fire, to our first responder pay, okay? Now, it takes me a little while to learn. I'm a slow learner. But what I have realized is administrations, once they raise taxes, typically do not continue to address the future needs. And I agree, we are going to have to put in some kind of mechanism that continues on a yearly basis to address this situation, to keep this council or any future council out of being hot box.
That's right.
We're being hot box.
That's right. We are. Can I respond?
That's all I got.
May I respond?
Just a second. All right. So, thank you so much for your comments. I do want to say, I do want to address something that Councilman Davis led us off with, as well as Councilman Henderson has now followed back up on, in that, uh, the comments that were made from administration regarding the fifty-fifty, uh, just, I guess in the afternoon session, we can just address those comments and what has transpired to, to this point.
Sure.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that you all are addressed in regards to, in regards to that. And, oh, yeah, okay. So, Councilman Clark?
I just, uh, one of.
I just, I want to, I want to echo something, uh, Councilman Henderson said is that, you know, in government, we should be able to sit at this table and have disagreements. Not, you know, I don't like everything he says or Marvin, Jim Hill, Council, Chairwoman Hill. I love you guys. Like, and I, when I say love, because that's how I was trained. You know, that's the Christian compassion in my heart. And so when you say something I don't like, it's, and it goes for the mayor, there should be no retribution. You know, we have to come together and get the job done for this business because the people expect us, they're customers. I'm a customer. I pay, you pay into the system too. So I agree with you, uh, Councilman Henderson, is that this should be healthy, safe debate without retribution because we're just doing the, I believe we're doing the Lord's work. God has chosen us to lead people. That's, that is a chosen job, and it comes with a responsibility. And I'm not a preacher, but that's how we are in my district. Trust me, I'm far from it, okay? Uh, the other thing I want to address is the, what the county had to do in a, in their abilities to not go back to the taxpayers. I believe that they're, as, as an economist who has advisors, you know, one of the reasons why the county's able to do that is because they don't have to pay what we have to pay. They don't, the county doesn't pay for fire police in the county. Let that sink in for a second. Oh, how, how's that possible? I don't have, I know how he's, was, how he was able to do that increase without going back to the taxpayers because the county doesn't do fire and police in my district, and I'm a county. You're in the county. You're in the county. Wait a minute. All of you guys are county. So one of the reasons why they're able to have that savings is because they're not spending it. Because they can spend more in the county. You know, and I think this council needs to really start having a, a deep dive discussion with what we get from county. I believe the county is just as responsible for my safety and security with fire just as the city because I pay taxes in both places. So let's talk about that. So I really do, and I applaud the sheriff for being able to do that. But you can do it when you ain't paying for the, uh, for the rest of the people in the county. Sure. So I just wanted to address that, uh, I, you know, no retribution. Uh, I, if y'all did commit to finding half, I believe they had an oh crap moment and realized they couldn't find it. And that's okay. It is a safe place to be smart and say, oh, I can't, I need to retract. I don't think they were able to find it. We didn't find it. They came back and said, we can't find it. We looked, we didn't find it. So the responsible thing to do is to capture the growth. And that's all I have to say. Uh, our budget is a moral document. I hope you guys will do the right thing. But I think there are some tangible things that we have to be mindful of. And there are some more cuts that Councilwoman Hill has mentioned that needs to be considered in addition to capturing the growth, uh, from our property assessment, so.
Thank you, Councilman Clark. Councilman Harvey.
I, I have a response, but I want to save it for later until I'm going to give you all due diligence and, uh, a moment to listen to your proposal.
I want to add on. You want to be the first after, after the.
Well, well, we'll, we'll, we'll see, but, but I, I just want to say this, and I'm glad the fire union's here. I'm glad chief's here. I'm glad interim chief Knowles is here. Um, thank you guys for being here. Um, I want you to hear it from me. And I don't want to speak for the whole council, but I would assume that we all feel the same way. We all want the same thing for you guys. I think, I think you should be the highest paid city employees in the city of Chattanooga. I truly do. For the job that you guys do, it's the hardest job in the city. It's the hardest job in the country as far as I'm concerned, other than that and military service. So I think, I want you guys to be paid as, as much as we can afford. I, like Councilman Clark said, if it was eighty grand a year, I wish we could do it. And so that, that is my goal, is to pay you guys what, what your guys need. Um, however, I think it's, it's not that we, we disagree on that. It's the mechanism which we, how we get there. And, and that's, that's just the conversation that we're having here today. So please know from me, I want you guys to be paid what you're, what you need. It's just how we get there.
All right, counsel. And just for clarity, just for me, um, Councilman Clark mentioned that, uh, there are, you know, the county doesn't pay for, uh, fire services. So I just want to get it on the record because I was like, what now? And so I turned around and asked my favorite guy, uh, what happens here? And then, uh, so what is, what are they, it's all volunteer service in the county?
Majority volunteer.
Majority volunteer service in the county. Okay, that was just what my own personal like.
Oh, okay.
They do have big fire stations and they do have equipment that you pay for with your tax dollars.
And they do have thousands that burn in the ground.
They do. Okay. Okay. So that works then. So with that, any other questions, uh, city, uh, ca? I'm sorry. Counsel, my colleagues, y'all have any additional questions or? I'm sorry, y'all. My mom called me this morning, so I'm all.
This is the problem.
Um, but, um, any other questions or comments before we break until twelve? Okay. All right. Any question? All right. Well, give you some, give you, let you reclaim your time. We appreciate you very much.
Oh, time.
Yes, time.